Leave him here. It's 2:00.
Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for today's invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it seems to come up on us faster and faster every year, but this is our holiday season, and I thought I would take the opportunity to wish all of you a happy holiday season. Try not to eat too much turkey, ham, or whatever it is you're going to eat so that you can come back here and take care of business next year. And to my colleagues as well, happy holidays to all of you as well.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this edition of the -- to the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for -- I'm thinking I'm doing a television show. Council thanks you for being here this afternoon.
We're not on tape today.
As a courtesy to those in attendance, please turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items 6 and 7 can be considered together for Andrews Corner located at 34th and Burt Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 6, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Andrews Corner. Item 7, a resolution to approve the final plat for Andrews Corner.
Public hearing on agenda items number 6 and 7 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any oponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve items 6 and 7, no lights, roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 6 and 7 are approved, 7 to 0. Items 8 and 9 can be considered together for the Greater Omaha Packing Project located at 30th and L Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 8, an ordinance to rezone this property from HI District and CC District to HI District. Item 9, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by Greater Omaha Packing Company for a major amendment to a special use permit to allow meatpacking and related industries in HI District.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 8 and 9 are today. Proponents, please.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10-909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100, 68154. Here with me is Mark Tyson with Greater Omaha Packing as well. This is for a major amendment to the special use permit with the rezoning from CC to HI in this location here. They're adding, in addition to the existing packing plant there, it'll be an automated building using for the packing and cold storage and increasing their efficiency in shipping. There is not an increase in the employee count. Currently, they're still at 519 employees on their largest shift. Truck traffic in the area will decrease because some of these uses that were previously done off-site will now be done onsite and therefore reduce the total amount of trucks onsite coming daily for deliveries and pickups. This is the theater location due to the parking lot for the expansion. 605 total off-street parking stalls. We provided at the time of that completion, they have an agreement off-site to park as they do this construction with Metro during that construction phase. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any oponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just wanted to take a second to note this project because we didn't really talk about it this morning. A major reinvestment of 51,000 square feet at a great employer in South Omaha and a good corporate citizen as well, so I wanted to thank you for that reinvestment. And you didn't mention it, but do you have a dollar figure on that reinvestment about what this project will cost?
Forty-plus million.
Forty-plus million and a much more efficient use of the site, I think.
Yep. Better traffic patterns, more parking all the way around.
And over 500 employees, so we appreciate that investment in South Omaha.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. I was just going to expand on that a little bit. I think it's -- we have a great story here, I think. You've got a major employer, over 1,200 jobs, I think, in total, excuse me, to Omaha. We've got 70 countries they export to. I think they've -- they're now shipping to China, first time in 13 years since that market was closed. I think Greater Omaha Pack was also the first to export to Japan as well as Saudi Arabia. Just a great story. I thank Henry and his family for all their investment in Omaha. And little-known fact, he, although with deference to my friend over here, he may be the best sailor in Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo both of my colleagues and say again, this area is moving in the right direction, and I thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve items 8 and 9, there are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 8 and 9 are approved, 7 to 0. Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the townhomes of Village Point located southwest of 168th and Western Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 1009 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100, 68154. With me also today is Larry Jobin on behalf of the developer here for the townhouses of Village Point. We are located at 168th and Dodge, that northwest corner. Get our bearings here a little bit. This is the Briar Hills subdivision here. This is the Mobile Home Park that has been there for quite some time. This is where the West Dodge Point is located, where the new -- all the new dealerships are being done by Baxter. And of course, across the way is the mall. This is a 31-acre development for this location. This location's been before to the planning board multiple times over the last 10, 15 years. As our understanding from Planning Department, this is so far the first plans come forward they've been able to give a recommendation of approval for. Maybe one other plan. We have 116 townhouse units and one assisted living multifamily component of that, so that's how we got to the 117 total lots. These are all duplex lots at this location here. There is flood plain and floodway located on this site, which is why there's the green space is at this location. And everything is pushed towards the north just to get everything up out of that flood plain and floodway. The floodway's all the way down on this location here. The current property owners will maintain ownership of this piece of property, so they are a part of the project from that standpoint. This will simply be a placeholder. I'll go through some rendering, some things for this building, simply not knowing what -- quite yet what the market will bring at that location, but they will have to come back with some more definitive plan as they get a real user that wants to be there. So right now, we do not have a real user there, so leaving that open at that time. We met with the neighborhood the last week of September before the October Planning Board meeting, and a really good meeting. I was mentioning in pre-council that actually had -- the people here were concerned for our project, so that was a first for me. We then had Planning Board. We voted 7-0. Met with property owner here, October 19th, to discuss the concerns that were brought up at Planning Board. We had a meeting. It was brief. And have since had some more discussions there. And so we're working towards some resolution between the two property owners as we go forward. We have 232 garage parking and 232 driveways. We have two units in each building and then two units out front. The total of around 31 stalls onto the street. So a 4.2 car-per-unit parking density on this site. The density on the site is a little less than six units an acre. This is an R6 PUD, so much of the same things that are being required. And the reason why it's a planned unit development specifically is for this use here. In order to get a total amount of units that the market will bear to pay the price that probably this piece of property will be asking for, they need at least to be north of 100 units. And so we've been used the PUD to transfer some density from this location to the list location while still maintaining all the site regulations that we've had to maintain throughout the last eight or 10 years we've done this R6 PUD. So still have to maintain 35-foot height. It can't be over 14 and 1/2 units total on the overall project, okay, from the density standpoint, and meeting all the setbacks and all the open space and green space. So that's really the reason behind the PUD. Does require a little more work on our end as we have to come forward with all of our building elevations and our materials list, and they get locked down a little bit on this site plan, which is good for the surrounding neighborhood that knows what they're going to get. And if we want to make any major changes that we agree to today or going forward, then we would have to come back before the Planning Board as well as City Council, more than likely if it's a major change, to get approval. And so it gives those property owners adjacent to us the opportunity to come and express any concerns they may have at that time. So to give you an idea of some of the things that we've had to show, this is the materials list and a pile list of some stone that they want to use on the houses. This is a -- just a black and white photo of the proposed unit going forward for the townhouses specifically. Garage is apart, doorway's in the middle, providing for some parking on street as you go to either side. And this shows the idea behind -- if we can get that out a little bit more. But a fairly, I don't want to say generic, but a pretty simple apartment layout or assisted living, noting that in order to get down to the height, they'll be parking underneath this building, and it's completely buried the way that hill's going to work with the grading of 168th Street, and there's a big knob. If you can kind of picture, there's a house there existing, so we'll be able to drive in under that entire fourth floor. It's buried, so therefore, we can still meet that 35-foot height requirement throughout. Have some material lists of things they're looking for. Again, this will have to come back, more than likely, with whatever is a real project going forward with that. Have been working with staff as well as public works, staff in terms of the PUD, but public works at the 168th Street. We are on the same page with them. We understand construction timelines, working through with maybe opportunity letting some of the contractors use some of the site as a loading area or as a batch plant. So we're working through some of those issues, trying to be as helpful as possible. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any oponents who wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
I'm Jerry Banks, 5013 Webster Street, and I'm the managing owner of the Briar Hills Apartments to the north. First of all, I'd like to state that I'm in favor of the development in an overall sense. I'm very concerned about the density and lack of parking availability for the project towards the north end of the project and that the residents and/or their visitors will be imposing upon our project a burden that we shouldn't have to bear for the policing of parking. We have a lot of amenities at our property, including a swimming pool, dog park, firepit, fitness center, tornado shelter, those types of things, which this project has none of. Therefore, we're an attraction for them to come. I attended the public meeting for the neighbors there, and I voiced my opinions to Jason, and Mr. Shamu was not present. I came to the Planning Board meeting, again voiced my concerns. Mr. Shamu was not -- the developer was not present. At the planning board meeting, Trenton Maggott and David Rossacker, and I believe one other gentleman, I don't recall his name, stated to Mr. Thielen that they would go ahead and pass this along, but that they wanted the developer to meet with me personally and try to work out solutions to their high density, to their lack of amenities, to their accessing my property. Jason set up a meeting for us to meet with the developer. It was the 9th or the 19th of November. I went there. Mr. Shamu did not show up. Jason was there and quickly informed me that they were not going to make any accommodations. None. Zero. I asked, "How about a fence?" Nothing. Zero. They're doing a $25 to $30 million development. I have 730-foot of frontage adjacent to their project. It would cost them approximately $15,000 to put in a fence that would stop people from using my parking to park at their place. Now, they make the argument that they have 4.2 stalls per unit, is it? Is that right?
Three units.
That's a great number. Sounds good. All but 31 of those stalls are privately owned. You can't park on them. If you're visiting, if I live there and I invite three people over who bring three cars, two maybe can fit in my driveway, probably if I'm not already using it. The other one's got to go to find a stall somewhere. The 31 is spread throughout the project. From the back door of their units to my parking is approximately 75 feet. That's 25 to 30 adult steps. It's the closest, most convenient for them to do. They'll talk about a 10-foot drop between their property and my property. That's from the street in front of their units up to the highest elevation at the far end of my parking. It's really 5 to 6 feet, and it's a slope. It's not bad at all. I don't think my mother could handle it, but I know my kids could. Okay? The problem is, the developer here wants to maximize the density at the lowest amount of cost. I get it. I'm a developer. Been there, done that. But as soon as that project's sold out, he's gone. You folks and I have to deal with the issues and the problems. I think they should be putting in more off-street parking. I think they should be putting in more amenities. I get it. They don't want to do that. I said, "Okay, a fence. At your cost." $12,000, $15,000 in a $25 to $30 million development. No. Since my meeting with Jason, which I think was on the 9th or 19th, I haven't heard a word from anybody until Jason called me yesterday telling me the City Council meeting was today. Just wanted to remind me. Appreciate that. Mr. Jobin's contacted me. Appreciate that. Okay? The developer doesn't care enough to be at the public hearing with the neighbors. The Planning Board doesn't care what the Planning Board members said to do. Didn't care enough to show up to the meeting that was set up with me. Doesn't care enough to make a call or an email or anything between now and then. You think they care? What they care about is the highest amount of density at the lowest possible cost. Nothing else. You and I are going to have to deal with the problems from there on out. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other oponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do the proponents wish them rebuttal time?
Thank you. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group. So Jerry and I have talked a lot about this, and we're working towards a solution here, and we talked about it out in the hallway. Just a couple things I'll bring up. It's true. There is -- there's 70 feet between the two. There's 200 feet between park -- the actual parking stalls. This is actually a drive. There's a little bit of parking here. There's a driveway here. To get to a parking stall out in front and maybe to the back door, but it's almost 200 feet from -- as the crow flies across. If I were to park here and walk all the way around, I'm looking at almost over 1,000 feet, 1,150 feet to get around that. Not to mention, there's a 10-foot grade change between what the finished floor of those units will be and the top of that slope, whether it's steep or not. Still got to walk through that. So think about the times that we're concerned about parking. I think when we get to a point where we're starting to design certain subdivisions and things around things like Thanksgiving dinners, Christmases, football games, it's starting to get past the point where maybe we are going to start requiring every subdivision to have maximum amount of parking for one or two events throughout the year. In addition, talking about the reality of how we use our parking stalls, just last week, to go watch Christmas lights at my in-laws that live in a development not unsimilar to this with the same amount of parking, we had four cars stacked in the driveway from the front of the garage to the street. That's actually two extra stalls, in my opinion, that you would typically see in a neighborhood. And if you've been to any kind of party, people pull as far up as they can, they park across the sidewalks, and that's the reality of it, on top of some on-street parking. So the things that Mr. Banks is requiring aren't required by code. There are things that we will get together and do our best to work through with Mr. Banks. Okay? But I think we've got to be careful about the amount, the kind of things that we're asking. Amenities, some of these things, it's up to the developer developing their property and what kind of amenities they want for their project, not what somebody else thinks they should do because of the type of product that they're bringing to the marketplace. In addition, and maybe Mr. Fanslaw can talk a little bit about the type of projects being brought forward, the first project they've been really been able to get behind on this piece of property. I mean, that says a lot for something that's been on the market for 15 years. We actually have a project here that the Planning Department's excited about, glowing recommendation for approval, even with some of these issues. So with that, answering any questions you have.
Thank you. That'll conclude the public hearing. Mr. Harding. Or did you want to -- Larry, did you want to make comment?
Larry Jobin, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I just want to -- Jason kind of hit on it, but I always kind of laugh about this property because I always tell people it's the gift that keeps on giving. People have been calling me on this development or this piece of property for probably the last 15 years, and nothing has ever worked. And this is the first time, I think, that there's been a site layout that actually works and fits the master plan. Again, as Jason alluded to, the Planning Department was excited about this. That's why he had the favorable recommendation from the department as well as the Planning Board. And again, I think if you wanted to ask Mr. Fanslaw and not listen to me, this is a piece of property that has been laid out 25 ways to Sunday, and this is the first time that I think we actually have a workable, good project at this particular location. That's all I was going to add. Thank you.
With that, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. I've had some conversations too with Mr. Banks and his concerns and Mr. Thielen and Mr. Jobin as well, who are representing the developer. And I brought this up a little bit during pre-council today. There was a -- I think there was an expectation where -- that was laid out at the Planning Board that the developer and the abutting property owner, Briarwood, Mr. Banks, were to get together. And I understand the meeting was set up. Mr. Shamu was not able to be there for whatever reason, but the expectation was that when the meeting was set up, that he would be there. So I think I have -- I've talked with Mr. Banks about that, and I'd like to get Mr. Thielen or Mr. Jobin on the record representing the developer. We are just at the preliminary plat stage. I would -- I want to hear from you if you will commit on the record to a meeting with the developer, Mr. Shamu, and Mr. Banks. And before this can go to Planning Board for consideration of final plat, that meeting has to occur, and you have to notify the Planning Department of that meeting.
Yes.
Is that something you'll commit to?
I spoke with my client today, and they have committed to that meeting. They want Mr. Jobin and I at that meeting as well. So you'll have two representatives there along with our client, meeting with Mr. Banks and talking over his concerns.
Okay.
And I've committed that to Jerry as well.
Okay. And then, thanks. That's all I had. Jason, thanks. The -- I also want to make sure that, and I've talked with Mr. Banks about this too, that, and if I'm not correct in this, please tell me, Mr. Fanslaw. So in addition, well, at least for public comment, Mr. Banks would then have the opportunity for at least two more public hearings as it relates to the subject, both for the final -- the approval of the final plat and PUD, as well as that would -- at the Planning Board as well as at City Council. Is that correct, Mr. Fanslaw?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. The final plat will be administrative only on the Planning Board agenda, but there'll be an opportunity for another council meeting for sure.
The administrative only for the final plat?
Correct.
What about the PUD?
PUD was acted on by Planning Board in October.
And then when will the PUD be before the City Council?
Along with final plat.
So and is the PUD handled administratively as well?
It's already been heard at a public hearing.
At Planning Board?
At Planning Board. So as customary, the final plat will be administrative only on the Planning Board, but there'll be another public hearing at council.
Okay. So, Mr. Banks, just to be clear, when I told you there were two, it's actually there will be one, and that's for the final plat. There will be an action at Planning Board for the final plat, but it's administrative purposes only, and there's no public hearing on that part. But you will still have that opportunity. Are you okay with that?
Can I ask a date?
Sure. If you could come on in. I think your question's going to be about the date. I think when, by the time final plat comes around, it's likely to be probably the spring of '18, so probably May or April, May, somewhere in there.
Yes.
Okay.
That helps.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We would also be -- because it's administrative, if we don't have a meeting, don't put us on February agenda.
No, that's what I'm saying. You can't be on the Planning Board agenda, even if it's for administrative action only for the final plat.
Yep.
Okay.
No problem.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Before we see the PUD.
The PUD will come with a final plat.
Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I heard that the concept of having a fence was just unbelievable. Probably the development hangs whether we spend that much money because we have to look at the loan. This afternoon, I've heard it's not that big a deal. No matter what we go, I'd like to know, have somebody tell me before we make the final vote, what the cost of this fence will be. You know, I almost, to be honest with you, this reminds me of my past life as a school principal. I almost feel like I'm in an argument that happened over recess, and we have people arguing over something that could be resolved. But I do want to know -- what's that? Yes. I do want to know what that costs, whether there is a fence involved or not, because I was led to believe this morning it was just unbelievable cost, and this afternoon not. I'm not asking for that cost now, but sometime I need to know that before a final vote by me is on this. Did you want -- yeah, come -- yeah.
Thank you, sir. My property line's 730 feet long, abutting their property, and a good fence, 6-foot high, would probably cost anywhere $15 a lineal foot, so I would estimate it to be under $15,000. I brought this up with Mr. Thielen in our November meeting, again, numerous times, not numerous times, again today with Mr. Jobin and them. Problem is, they're not able to make a commitment for the developer. Okay? Developer doesn't want to show to the meetings. What am I to do? I agree with you. This could have been easily resolved if they'd have followed through with what the Planning Board members asked them to do on October 4th. Wouldn't be wasting your time or my time and everybody else's time if they would have followed through with something. But they're not able, and they're friends of mine, respect them, they're not able to make a decision. So hope I answered your question.
No, I understand that part.
Thank you.
But I just want to make sure, though, before I make a final vote, that I find out what the actual cost is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, I do like the analogy of the principal's office, except that the two people who came in from recess, or the three in this case, are all friends and, you know, grew up together, play together. I can't believe that you can't solve this together. And putting it in the fate of seven of us rather than work it out and control your own destiny, I think is kind of silly. And so you're all good people, and the developer, Mr. Shamu, is too. And so I would encourage you to, at least as from my perspective, to carry that message back.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the condition, as I set forth, that the developer and Mr. Banks will meet prior to this, appearing on the Planning Board for final plat.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve, subject to those conditions, there are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, 7 to 0. Items 11 and 12 can be considered together. Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Coventry located northwest of 204th and Harrison Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Coventry Ridge located northwest of Coventry Drive and Harrison Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 11 and 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 1144 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant with me today. On behalf of the applicant is J.F. Carter, as well as Kevin Sassy of Olson Associates, the consulting engineers on this particular project. This is at 204th and Harrison. This council, maybe not this council, but other councils before you've seen this project a number of times. There's been a number of revised preliminary plats that have been approved by this council. This is again, a revised preliminary plat. And so item 11 is the mixed-use area here shown in green, which has 64 acres and there's 22 commercial office lots and a multifamily residential lots and then three outlots for open space. And then item 12, you have 37, almost 38 acres that are being replatted to 107 single-family residential lots and one outlot for open space and drainage. So again, this is a more colored-up space of the mixed-use area, which is item 11. And then of course, residential is item 12. We're really simply here to answer any questions. The devil is in the details, as you say, with subdivision agreements and mixed-use development agreements as the final plats move forward that you'll see down the road. But as far as the amount of retail that you have here, there's about 214,000 square feet of general retail. There's 20,600 square feet of hospitality shown. There's a 60,000 square foot theater shown here as well and some multifamily that's shown also on this particular site plan. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you. Mr. Jobin.
Yes, sir.
You know, by looking at that, I'm just thinking ahead because will any of this qualify someday to have a storage unit built on it?
Well, we're not calling for one of those right now. And I think given the price of the land and everything else and the investment that they have and the fact that they're going to be the developers and I believe, are you going to retain part of these buildings as well? The applicant, J.F. Carter, and his investment group are going to retain a lot of these buildings. So I can imagine, I suppose there could be, because I think convenient storage is permitted in MU, I believe, with a special use permit, if I'm not mistaken, but I don't have the code in front of me. Maybe that's a question for Dave. There's no, there's nothing like that shown today. And so if there was something like that, I think if it's not a permitted use and it was a conditional or special use, then we would have to come back to planning board and council. So I can't remember from the code if that's a, where that falls in the MU classification. Maybe Dave.
Yeah, well, the only reason I'm saying it, because I know there's one on 180th, not too far from there, and I figured about every, seemed like we had one on, out in the Elkhorn area, then we moved another one down and further into the Millard area, and this is moving a little further out. I was just trying to, I was caught sort of by surprise on those. So I have a feeling, though, you're telling me there's not going to be one there. I, you know.
You know, I'll turn it over to J.F. because he knows more of these marketing plans than I do, but hold on, go ahead.
Well, J.F. Carter, 1823 Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Let me answer it this way. The proposed plan in front of you, there's close to $100 million of investment, including there's about a, there's about a $30 million investment between the hotel and the theater and the shops, not including what's going to happen in the corner and the outlots, along with another $30 million estimated investment in a multifamily project that we're talking to some people about. We, in addition to that, we have the Q Street corner that frankly, you're going to be hearing about here in probably another four months, where we're going to, where we're also talking about another multifamily project, was commercial very similar to this corner. We have been approached in the past about storage units and we have not, that's not part of our plan.
Okay.
That being said, we have, you know, 400, $500,000 houses and neighbors and covenants and all that kind of stuff that will be part of the mixed-use and be part of all that. So never say never. However, it's, we have, we have said no to two or three offers.
Okay. And I understand, I'm just asking, I'm just, because I was sort of caught by surprise on the other ones.
Yeah.
And that's, right now, that's not in your plans, which I could assume is the kind of money you're putting in there.
No, it's not in our plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
There are no further lights. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve 11 and 12. No lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 11 and 12 are approved, seven to zero. Item 13, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Ridgeview to allow for an existing broadcast tower to be increased in height from 105 feet to 115 feet, located southwest of 180th Street and West Center Road. Planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 13. No lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 11 and 12 are approved, seven to zero. Item 15, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Old Market Ventures LLC, doing business as Kith and Ken, located at 5018 Underwood Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
I am Greg Kutchel, 14307 Cummings Street, manager of Old Market Ventures, and here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Kutchel, if you wouldn't mind just coming down for a second, I want to give you an opportunity to talk about your latest venture here. I was there on your first Friday, last Friday, and it seemed like a seamless transition from what was Paragon and is now Kith and Ken and a welcome addition to Dundee. So just wanted to give you a chance to talk about what you're doing there.
Great. Yeah, we're excited. It was a fairly easy conversion, mostly cosmetic. Just had to warm it up a little bit, change some lighting and so pretty quick turnover in about two weeks. So business has been brisk, so we're excited.
Thought it was great. I think it'll be a great product for Dundee and you guys were certainly working at that night. So I've got faith in you two and we appreciate your investment in Dundee.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Motion approved.
Move and seconded to approve item 15. No lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero. Item 16, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for On 680 LLC, doing business as Regency Lodge, located at 909 South 107th Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second. No lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Eagle Food Mart Inc., doing business as Eagle Food Mart, located at 3707 Center Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello.
Name and address, please.
Javir Dickbaugh, 1112 Simran Street, Capelia, Nebraska, and Eagle Food Mart, 3707 Center Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero. Item 18, order Sons of Italy request permission for the reconstruction of the inside area to their Class C liquor license location at 1238 South 10th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Proponents?
Anthony Velazquez, 506 Dorther Street, 68108.
And you're a proponent?
Uh, yes.
You're in favor, okay.
A manager, manager.
Manager, okay.
Gate activities.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony, welcome. Thank you for being here. How's it going?
Good.
I had to ask, because I've seen the reconstruction on here. So tell me, obviously the fire was very devastating for all of us. So you're rebuilding now?
Correct.
And are you moving the bar inside of the space?
The bar itself, it was just going to move from here to here on the same corner of it. Yeah. Everything inside will be totally redone, reconstructed. Right now, we're setting chosses on for the roof, so once we get that roof on and the decking, hopefully that'll keep the weather out so we can get inside.
Gotcha. For the record, thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, this is actually District 3, but with a name like Palermo, how could you not let him take the lead?
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Moved and seconded to approve item 18, and they're not going to fight over it this time. No more lights, roll call.
Palermo. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Item 19, an application to appoint Dean F. Rasmussen as manager of Grandmothers Inc., doing business as Don and Millies, to their Class I liquor license located at 16930 Evans Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Dean Rasmussen with Grandmothers Inc., doing business as Don and Millies. Listed on the manager's application here today, and this is for our new Don and Millies located on 162nd and Maple Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to tease Dean here for a minute. What we look for in liquor license applications are conscientious managers and this particular license and location was previously approved a few weeks ago. We talked on the phone a couple of times. I said, "Don't worry about coming back down. You don't have to do it. We'll get it handled." But he still came because he's that conscientious, so I just wanted to point that out and observe your expertise as a owner and operator and motion to approve.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded to approve item 19. There are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The items where we had here, Madam Clerk, okay? The public hearing on agenda items numbers 20 through 29 were held on December 12, 2017. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I had a question maybe on one and then I was going to ask some questions on another. I just wanted to note, on item number 26, which was, we started out hearing this one at Board of Equalization, I think I read my email right. It looked like the, that was protesting, the assessment finally came up with some receipts. I think there were two of them that totaled somewhere around $15. So.
Well, actually, I saw about four receipts that totaled about $55.
Okay. I must have missed the other two, but.
Well, you have to, it's kind of hard to follow along with.
Still, I don't think $55 gets you very far on that. So I feel pretty comfortable with what we're doing there. Then on to number 28. I wondered if there was someone here from Fire. Thank you, sir. I think there's some question earlier, I'm sorry, I'll let you give your name and.
John McCormick, Assistant Fire Chief, 1516 Jackson.
Thank you. There are some questions at pre-council today on whether or not, I think there's a notation in the supporting documents about a 30% discount, or 40% discount if acted on by December 15, I think it was, and we're past that date. But I just wondered if, if the math that we were supplied with included that 40% discount? Is that what we're acting on?
Yes, we got a 40% discount. Motorola was cognizant of the fact of the 15th and the whole political process of the three readings, so they extended it out to December 31st.
Okay. Just for my education too, could you just explain a little bit how these radios work or the units work?
Radios are our communication for, you know, all our fire trucks and dispatchers communicate with us and we communicate with each other. These are radios that'll be, they're mandated, federally mandated by 2020 to have. The FCC's making everybody get them. It helps for the channels. It helps for the channels. It's more of a dispatcher and that kind of stuff, the channels that they have, and you don't get bonked, there's so much traffic coming in that, you know, you get bonked on the radio, which means you hit the thing and you're not going through. So there's a lot of technology which makes it more efficient and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerome.
I just want to expand on our conversation this morning, the pre-council, on item number 29, for members of the public that see that this includes in part an authorization for payment to McKesson for medical surgical supplies. Wanted to make sure that they knew that we had reviewed this in detail and determined that it had nothing to do with the opioid crisis in our country or to treat those who may be overdosing from such things like opioids. But I do think it's important that, to know, and for the community, that our city attorney is talking to the state's attorney general in terms of his intentions with regard to moving forward. I think we should at least, as a council, be drafting a letter to the attorney general urging him to go forward with that with regard to McKesson, and would urge you in FIRE leadership to be careful in terms of the vendors with whom you're choosing to do business with regard to the, is it Narcan or the anti-acting agent?
Narcan, yes.
Narcan. If there are others that supply that product other than McKesson, I would urge you to consider that.
Sure. Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Melton. I'm sorry, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is, I'm just right now speaking to the public. We did talk about this this morning, because I want the public to realize that we are looking at some of this. And I, when I first read this, I was really concerned about us going to this company. I understand, not being an attorney, I can't say we can't use them, but I want the public to know that we're looking at this. And after, if you had not seen the, what was on 60 Minutes, how this company, you ought to really start looking at some of the material you're buying from some of these companies, because the only way we can stop this, if we say enough is enough. And I'm hoping that those people in the city, because I did get the list of things that we did get from this company. It was 32,000, but, and I understand it's my bid, but I think we ought to really be proactive, and like I said, the attorney general, because I know Douglas County is getting into the action, the attorney general, because it just sickens me that we allow this to happen. And we have to start standing up and saying enough is enough, because that's the only way that these companies are going to be paying any attention. If you can realize the amount of money that the head of these companies, what they're making, and they act so naive about this, because they think a lot of us at this level, especially those who are not into politics, will just let this slide. And the only way we can stop this is by making this an issue. If they want to come back on us, fine, because we got to, this stuff has to stop. There are too many young men and women who are losing their lives to this addiction which they have stimulated. I challenge you, if you're not seeing the program, is to look at it. It is amazing, because one little town, it's like each individual in that town is like 50,000 tablets. They were just, they have to know this was going on. I know I'm speaking too long on this topic, but stuff has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Well, I think there's some people from FIRE. I just saw you get up to come down when we were talking about 29. I'd like to give you the opportunity, I think you have some information that you wanted to share with us, so if you could. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Kathy Mossman, Omaha Fire, 1516 Jackson. I am recently appointed to the EMS division, which includes the purchasing of EMS supplies. We have a list of eight items that, with your approval, we would be purchasing from a McKesson in 2018. Those items really are small items, safety goggles, wash basins. They add up to $32,000, just over. But I have seen the stories on McKesson, and we share your concerns. We are open to discussion on a vetting process for vendors in the future, and I think that would be smart to look at that.
Please do not take my. Outburst is against what you're doing, because I know you're doing your job, and I do, I have the list.
We do, and we are trying to be prudent with the taxpayers' dollars. You know, they, we accept the bids based on the, we are looking for the specific item at the lowest cost, and McKesson did provide the lowest bid on those items.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not quite done.
Yeah, no.
I also, last week, I actually congratulated you on the great achievement that you've made. I'm very proud of you. You've earned it. You've deserved it. And so now that you're here, I just wanted to take a moment to just say it again. So congratulations, and thank you for all that you're doing and watching this.
Thank you.
If you can stay there, though, Mr. Jerome.
Yeah, and let me call you chief then, Chief Mossman. I'm glad to hear you say what you did, too, because if there's a process that maybe the city attorney can help guide us to help you use in terms of responsible contractors. We do certain things in other areas of contracting with the city. There's no reason to think why we couldn't come up with something in your area to cover situations like this.
Sure.
Because we want to, we want to deal with responsible contractors. And the thought occurred to me, is it possible that McKesson was the low bidder on these items, because it's a loss leader to their other activities that they're profiting on under the abuse of opioids from others? So I wonder about that.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we vote, I'll just, first of all, I wanted to say, I don't consider it an outburst, because I saw that story, too, Mr. Pauls, and I was appalled by that story. But more importantly to me, we have federal elected officials who are just as complicit in this, who knew what was going on and who did nothing, passed no laws, did nothing. So when we want to chastise an organization, which should be chastised, we have to also take into consideration that there were checks and balances in place that were not used, and people didn't have the backbone, quite frankly, to stand up and do what they needed to do. I'm hoping that will change at the federal level at some point, but we'll see how it goes. There are no further lights. Is there a motion?
I think there was.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. There are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 20 through 29 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 30 and 32 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seemed like everybody ran out on me when I said that. Chief, how are you?
Good afternoon. Kerry Newman, Deputy Chief, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. I believe we're at item number 32.
Yes.
Correct? We're asking you to approve the purchase of 460 body worn cameras. That's in addition to our complement of 115 that we already have. If you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to note, since Deputy Chief was here, thank him and Chief Smarter for their proactive engagement on this issue and for engaging the private sector to help fund what would be 460 new automatic body cameras for our police force in 2018 with deployment starting in spring, it sounds like, that we discussed this morning. I think it's, says a lot that our police department is pursuing this, and it's an important development for our officers, but also for the general public, that we're doing this and implementing it so quickly, to be one of the first in the country to be doing this. So I think that's notable as well, and notable that in a city like Omaha, the private sector steps up and cares about this kind of thing and is willing to help fund it. So I think that's a great development we have here today, and I'm sure we'll all approve this here in a minute, and I'll go ahead and move that approval.
Moved and seconded to approve items 30 through 32. Mr. Jerome.
Yes, Chief. I would just add, I was glad to hear this morning that this contract will approve the upgrading of the existing body cams that we have to the latest technology, and it removes in many situations the, from the officer's already stressful situation, having to remember the SOP to activate the first generation cameras. This now does that automatically through technology. And we know from evidence that having the cameras improves the encounters that the police have, both on the citizen's behavior standpoint and the officer's documentation of what's going on and transparency. So to me, I'm glad to see that we're making such an expansion and that it will be, as you said earlier, based upon our understanding, the first major city in the U.S. to go all